All right, so our next item here is a discussion. Please, I'd like to resume the meeting, please, thank you. Okay, our next discussion item is Locust Tree Residential Properties LLC Landscape Business.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Troy Wojcikowski, engineer for the applicant. The property's at 80 Airport Drive and it's a landscape business. The scope of the improvements consist of a few parking space additions, rearrangement of the parking, better separation of the operations part of the business from the employee and visitor parking, better screening of the operations in the back. Since our last meeting, we made just a few changes based on comments from consultants and from the board, I'll just touch on those real quick tonight. Probably the biggest issue or discussion point were the poly tanks that located in the rear of the property on top of the retaining wall. Those tanks contain liquid that's used for snow removal and ice control. Where they were located would require a rear yard setback variance, so we relocated those tanks so that they do not need a setback variance. So they'll be sited on the northeast side of the property, still in the back of the building, and we're proposing a stockade fence on two sides to help to block those tanks. And we actually removed one of the tanks as well. There's currently three tanks and we're going to go with two tanks. Also submitted the MSDS sheet for the material that's stored in there, it's a non-hazardous material, and that was submitted to the board. The other addition I think we made since last time was we did show in detail a dumpster enclosure, so that's shown on the site plan and the detail is provided. Made the minor adjustments to the storm system up front as recommended by the engineering And I think that's it. The other kind of outstanding item was to receive confirmation from DEC for the seven trees, the four pear trees and the three crab apples that we're going to relocate, just to confirm that they are not Indiana habitat. Michael Nowicki, the project's biologist, has looked at them and he's stated that they aren't. But we've submitted to DEC just to get their concurrence on that, so we're still waiting for that. They actually reached out to me two weeks ago and just asked for something a little more formal from Mr. Nowicki. So that's been in and we expect word from DEC probably within the next week or so. I think that's it. I don't know if the board has any remaining questions or consultants.
I had one thing there is where those tanks, tanks used to be up higher in gravity fed or something?
Yes.
Okay, now you got them down and no pump out of them, right?
Correct.
So down on the ground there, should there be a bollard or a jersey barrier or something? Because it looks like it's like right on the corner there coming around the building.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Dump truck or something backs into it and pops a hole in it?
That's a great idea.
They're just, oh, those big white plastic tanks, I assume, right? Even instead of a stockade fence, you know, a jersey barrier or a bollard, you know, just because of where it is.
Sure.
That's the only thing I saw.
Okay. Anybody else have any other concerns? All right, turn it over to the engineer, address the...
Yeah, most of our prior comments were addressed, Troy, I'll just have to get approval for the water service and backflow preventer from the county health department, and then we just need a, that the entrance work is subject to a permit from the highway department. Most of our prior comments centered around, you know, drainage for the added parking spaces in the front, but that's been taken care of. Troy's provided some stone infiltration trench in the front, and that was pretty much it for us.
So, the first question was the relocation of the poly tanks. We're curious about the distance between that and the curb and whether or not that distance is going to allow for emergency services and two-way traffic around the building. We're just a little concerned about the turn radius and fire truck or something like that. It does look like you have a little bit of room to move it towards the back and still make that 50-foot setback if you need to, if we need to create a little bit more room And then I guess the relocation of the poly tanks raised the other question, which was the other structures within the 50-foot setback. This is a question for the applicant and also one for the building department, which was, you know, did those require very, rear setback variances when they were put up? Were those granted, et cetera?
For the retaining wall in the back?
I was going to ask about the storage building in particular.
Yeah, I don't have a copy of the approved site plan to see that.
I'd be curious if it was on the original site plan and whether or not that will require a setback variance.
Is that something that would be grandfathered in if it was like really that old there or something?
No, that would have to be, if it wasn't part of the original approval, they're going to have to address that.
Come back.
Yeah. So that's going to have to be researched.
So we're just looking at the tanks to see if they can be moved back without a variance. So if they, the base, the base is a concrete base, so that really falls, it's not structure, it's landscaping. And if the two tanks are less than 144 square feet, that falls below, they'd only need 10 feet from the rear and the side, so that could be moved back toward the storage building, which would give you better access around the building.
144 square, what is the threshold for that?
Yes.
So they'd be looking at that?
Well, I'm just going by setbacks. The size, it's less than 144.
Currently, it's currently proposed as more than 144.
Let's, let's go over that one.
Yeah, we'll look at 240, 21. Obstructions in the yards.
You'll just destroy that.
Right, but what's the size overall? I didn't see it. So if you could just tell us what the overall size is of the two together, I think you could pull them back.
And so it would just be the tanks themselves, not the?
And the platform, but that's just a concrete pad. And that may solve that problem with access.
Yeah, I think it's going to exceed the 144.
Then it would need a variance, but that's why...
Yeah, but maybe we can slide it to the side a little bit.
You've got a few feet to move back, you know, it looks like 10, 15 or so, or go back towards the side lot line. I think you can, I think you can create enough space with them where they are for access or anything.
Can you put them behind, behind this one? Back up, so the trucks go back to it on this side?
On this other property.
Property line's out there.
Out here, he's got 78 feet. So if you move it to the other side of the curb line, where the truck's back to it?
That starts to get septic system area. But we, what we can do is run a little turn with a fire truck through there to make sure it passes. If it doesn't, then we'll just shift it a couple of feet. Not a big deal.
The only other two items, they're requesting a modest increase in their parking, and that's, we talked about this earlier, that'll require a waiver from the planning board. And the planning board should consider whether or not they'd like to proceed with a coordinated or uncoordinated review. If they'd like to do a coordinated review, they could consider declaring themselves lead agency. If they don't feel a coordinated review is necessary, we can move forward with an uncoordinated.
All right, but this is if they have to go for variance, you're saying?
No, that was secret.
For secret?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we have to declare lead agency on this?
If you'd like to move forward with coordinated, yeah.
Okay. All right. What's everybody's feeling, just coordinated review? Okay. We'll, we have to issue intent for lead agency at this point, so we get a motion to have the secretary circulate?
Made.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, so we have to... Is there, Malcolm, is there any other issues that you have regarding this?
No.
That haven't been addressed, okay.
No, just keep us in the loop with whatever you hear back from DEC when you reach out to them.
Okay.
All right, any of the board members? No other questions regarding this?
Not really.
No.
Okay. Does the staff have any questions? No? You okay? All right. All right, you have any other, anything else? That's it?
That's it.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Okay. All right, our next item on the agenda this evening is a site plan special use permit for Dutchess County Casa Italiano LLC.
Good evening, board members. For the record, my name is Albert Roberts, I'm an attorney, and I'm representing the Italian Center. I just thought I would give some brief background of how we got here. This is the former Elks Club building on 376, which the Italian Center purchased on March 1st of this year. The Italian Center sold its property in Poughkeepsie because the build, they owned the building for almost 100 years, there was a massive capital gain. And the Italian Center opted for what is called a 1031 tax-free exchange. Both the Italian Center and the Elks Club were not-for-profits, just because they're not-for-profits does not exempt them from taxation. Both sales, the Italian Center sale and the Elks Club sale to the Italian Center, required the Attorney General's approval, which both organizations got. When they, the arrangement between the Italian Center and the Elks Club was that the building was sold as is, with the proviso that the Elks Club could continue to use the facilities for five years free of charge to hold their buildings and their little gatherings such as Flag Day, American Grill, dinners for young ladies and what have you. When the Italian Center got the municipal search, a number of anomalies were found with the site. And I'll just give you a, for instance, I'm a member of both the Italian Center and the Elks Club. The Elks Club has been in its current condition since it was constructed, I believe, in 1988, including the steps, the air conditioning and what have you. However, the town hall's records didn't disclose all the things that were essentially approved when CO was granted. One of them, for instance, was the combination heating-air conditioning system. It was bent on the roof, it's been there since the inception, but it did not say that in the building permit application, so a question arose whether or not they needed a building permit and to have a reinspection. Long story short, after inspection, it was replaced, they got a new permit, and that was one of the improvements made with the 1031 tax-free exchange money. All the improvements that have recently been made have been on the interior, with the exception of repairing the blacktop. The purpose of tonight is to clarify what is being used with the exterior of the premises, get approval for the steps in the rear, and to clean up some of the sheds that didn't have permits. There was a question going back in the late 80s or 90s whether they even needed permits, but things are being moved around. And at this point, if there's no questions, I want to turn it over to our engineer, Mike Gillespie, and Mark Weber, who is also a representative of the Italian Center.
Good, thank you.
Mike Gillespie, engineer for the project. So Al provided a kind of a general overview, I think we all probably know, if we've been in the town a while, exactly where this is on 376. I actually spent a couple sweet sixteens there back in the day. When you drive by the site, it sits up, right? So you kind of, kind of sits, there's a hill, there's a sign, and then you kind of see the front of the building, but unless you actually drive into the site, there's certainly a lot more going on in the back. As mentioned, at one point, you know, the Elks were there, the Italian Center, which is actually moving down from Poughkeepsie, as you might know, is acquiring a site. That's not to say that the Elks are not going to be there at times in terms of running it out and so forth, but this application really represents kind of a, an application to clean up maybe some things out there that, right, weren't in conformance of the original site plan that goes back quite a while. There's some minor modifications, including, for example, there was a horseshoe pits in the front of the building, they're putting a bocce court in, there's some monuments that you may have seen, some signage lately on the sign, there's a big sign on the building. They've gotten all their permits for the signage, and there've been interior renovations as well. In terms of the septic and the well, quickly, I know some questions came about in the comment letter specific to making sure that the adequacy was okay. I've had, based upon a referral that the town got from the health department, I had some discussions with the health department, just verified with him that the initial design that was proposed for this building, we're not changing that, okay, in terms of the occupancy and things such as that. So really, it's a fairly straightforward application. The Italian Center is a fraternal organization, so is the Elks, so we're just coming in and bringing things up to speed, so.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions regarding the application?
Yeah.
Too much over here?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll go ahead and discuss the items, I guess, that the engineer and the planner have.
Yeah, I'll go first. We just had a couple cleanup items, clarification of some of the things on the other plan. Mike, one of the things was a call-out for the new set of stairs off the access road in the back.
Yes.
But it says newly installed stairs, and then in parentheses, to meet 2020 building, building code.
Okay, so...
So are they in? And then there's got to be some upgrading to meet current code, or?
No, the story is there's an existing set of stairs as you walk out the back of the building, right up the hill. Those are in disrepair.
They're coming out, right?
So they're coming out. So the idea was there's going to be a new sidewalk that gets installed, comes up to a base of a new set of stairs, which based upon the elevation differences, you don't have to trek up as many steps.
Okay.
Those are proposed, okay?
Okay.
So I'll make sure that's clear on there, but yeah, that's something that is proposed.
So Barbara, that's going to require the stairs, are going to require a building permit? So do we need to see details of the stairs at site plan approval, or can they wait until you come in, they come in for building permit?
At the building permit level.
Okay. All right. And then I guess the only other thing, Mike, was we were chatting a little bit about the pavilion in the back, and so, so we think that there's a way to approve that now as a future phase, but we were talking about putting a note on the map that something along the lines at, that would say at the time of building permit application that they would need to show if there's going to be any new lighting, which I assume there would be some, no, no lighting?
That's back lot, the upper lot, we have two upper lots, the first one is paved, the second one is the millings that have been there. That is all currently lit, and we're not intending to add additional light.
For the pavilion, so there'd be no new lighting for the pavilion?
Potentially putting something underneath the pavilion to light it for usage at night, but as far as putting additional poles or major lighting in that we have, that's not part of the property.
Okay, so it's really just going to be put right on, like the millings that are in the back, probably with a pad, concrete pad?
Concrete pad with, there is a concept that we had submitted, a picture of it, that's what we're looking to do, a concrete pad with a pavilion, so if we have some outdoor activities, we don't have to cost a foot of tins, we're not exposed to the weather, and we get much greater use out of the property.
Yeah. So then...
I would still, so the note we were thinking of, should you decide when you put up the pavilion, you do want lighting. Instead of coming back to the planning board at that time, if you proposed it, you'd propose it with a lighting photometric plan, and I would just send it to the plan, or the zoning administrator of the day would send it to the planner, and as long as it met the code, you could go ahead with a building permit without having to come back.
Without having to come back, so...
So we're going to put that note on it.
So Mike, if you can just craft like a note, you know, to that effect, that would, you know, point to that, and then we can approve it as a phase, as a phase plan to be done later.
Sure.
And there has to be a time, say, however many years the board's comfortable with, it can't just go on forever.
Well, the print will say two years.
But you might, would the board be okay with three or four?
So is it, yeah, so to be, to be built out within, within four years is fine. Yeah. That would be...
We had some questions, we were looking at the internal circulation. We're curious if you could put in the dimensions of at least one of your standard parking spaces that we can verify, and that can just be one for the perpendicular spaces. And then we're also curious about the dimensions of the three parallel spaces along the building. And those will need dimensions for all three, the three spaces just behind the building?
Yep.
Will need dimensions for all three of those because they're different if you're in the middle versus if you're at either end, right? So the dimensions for the parking spaces. And then we're also curious, the drive aisle in the back parking lot is labeled as 24. Is it also 24 at the entrance and the exit at either end?
Yes, that's the intent, so we can label it as well.
Perfect, perfect. And then, there was some discrepancy between some of the submission, submitted materials as to the zone of the property. The narrative in the plans read R80, but the application forms read R40. I double-checked the town of Wavender zoning map, it looks like R80 is correct, so I'll leave that up to you to correct the application form.
Well, that's a minor thing, we'll clean it up.
Yeah, that'll be easy. And then the other thing was the relocation of the shed. I think you're going to have some issues with side setback. Your side setback requirements are 40 feet, and I think that...
Which shed was?
Oh, sorry.
Rear parking lot.
Yeah.
The relocated one, where you're going to move it in the rear parking lot.
Sort of right at the end of the paved area. I mean, double-check how far that is from the side lot line, but it, you know, it looks closer than 40 feet.
It's not 40 feet.
Does that shed though have a separate setback?
Yeah, so if it stays under 144 square feet, you only need 10 feet to the side. It needs 40 feet if you keep it at, I think you had 12 by 16, so you either have to relocate it in or shrink the size.
We'll make it work.
Sounds good.
We did have the property survey, we will check the distance from the property line to be sure that it is over 40 feet. Would you like to stay with 12 by 16?
Sure.
We are very limited inside storage, but we will confirm the 40 feet of space.
They could just apply for a variance or that, right?
No, they'll relocate it, I'm sure if it's not, I mean, you'll figure out, you're going to go make it 40 somehow.
Yeah, we'll make it work, I'd rather not do another application to the CBA.
Try to make it...
Yeah.
We'll make it work.
Okay.
It will be 40 feet from the property line.
Okay. All right. Oh, the garbage enclosure, that's, that's something that's being added? Up on the top, or it didn't show on the existing?
Yeah, the existing garbage receptacles, actually, when you come up, the access rotor on right-hand side, so we were going to put in refuse enclosure back.
Up on the top, okay.
After having the property survey, we determined that the garbage dumpsters have been on the neighbor's property for 50 years. We moved them onto our property, and we will be putting up a barricade around them, closure around them to screen them.
Okay.
They're not visible to the road, not visible to either neighbor, we will enclose them so that aesthetically...
Okay, okay, just give us some type of, some type of detail for that.
Absolutely.
Okay. Is there anything else that you guys had? Everything's good? No, the board members are good? All right. Do you have any other?
Well, I guess, I mean, again, they're fairly, you know, minor changes. We know that this is an existing use that basically is going to continue to use, albeit with some modifications. You know, I have to ask the question, we'll certainly make the modifications come back in, but this board does have the ability to waive a public hearing? No, there are residents on both sides, there's nobody in there.
I know what you're, yeah, I know what you're saying.
So, you know, I don't, I don't want to, you know...
Yeah.
But I certainly have to ask the question if the board would be comfortable in terms of moving in that direction with this particular proposal.
Yeah, I don't know, what's, what's the board's opinion? I mean, obviously, these are minor changes to the property.
I think you can waive it.
Yeah.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion to waive the public hearing?
We'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Great, thank you. That being said, I'll continue to push. We are going to go ahead and make these modifications, we'll make a resubmit, is there a way there could be at least authorized to prepare a draft resolution moving forward with the town planner, or would you rather see one more kick around before we get to that?
I prefer just to see one more. I don't know what everybody else feels.
Makes sense.
Just to see, to make sure everything's 100%, and at that point, we can move it forward for, for a resolution.
Okay.
Okay?
Got to ask.
I know, huh?
It's the way it works.
Doesn't, doesn't hurt to ask.
It's the way it works, okay. All right. Thank you, folks.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you, Robert.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda this evening is an architectural review for 1070 to 1072 Route 9 facade replacement.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. John Lantini, architect for the applicant, Mr. Arjan. I'm superseding the architect whose drawings were submitted. I was the original architect when Ulysses purchased the building and we did a retrofit. I'm not sure why he didn't use me, that was five years ago, but apparently in 2018, he employed Mr. Zeller, Donald Zeller, who, they're on good terms, I understand, but he just asked me to do the working drawings. What I've done, and I went on your website, I thought there was only seven board members, and I see there's a lot more, but I created some clarifying graphics. Would I be able to pass these out?
These are the ones that you've already, that were already submitted?
Drawings have already been submitted, but...
Or this is additional to?
Have that.
No, we have the...
These don't, these clarify what was, this is a three-dimensional drawing. It doesn't disagree with it, it just is a part of my presentation.
If you have, yeah, if you have, you can submit them to us. We just need to, how many, you only have seven, you said?
Yes, so...
Ralph and I'll share one, so it'd be...
Yeah, we need to give one to the, you have to definitely give one to the secretary to keep for the record.
We're going to share.
Yeah. All right, the existing enclosure.
Thank you.
Okay. What the owner wants to do is get rid of that peak in the front of the building that I've used as a landmark to navigate by. Whenever I come up Route 9, I know where I am when I see the building. But having said that, in terms of the look and the value of the building, he wants to make it look a little more institutional, but not completely, because he's selected a residential window. He's putting double-hung windows with grills. He's getting rid of, it's gonna be truncated. The front that sticks out now about five or six feet is gonna be brought back just to three feet. And there's going to be a blue awning, and I brought a sample board.
But that would be the color of the roof.
And there will be, I just noticed as I was waiting back there, I think Ulysses might have picked this color because he thought you might like it. Your wainscoting.
The gray, okay. So that would be the, that would be the gray for the rest of the building?
There's two colors. There's a lighter color in the middle, but that's the wainscoting color.
Okay.
I have to point out that this building faces west, so in the morning, it's dark, no matter what color you pick. But in the afternoon, just about everything you do there will be kind of brilliant, and it won't look quite that dark. It'll look a lot lighter. There's a lot of reflection there. Otherwise, he's going to put this cornice, a crown molding up on the top. He's using an insulating, an exterior insulating facing system known as IFIS to be able to make all the details of a crown molding. That's more accurate on my predecessor's drawing than mine. But it's gonna be a white trim. All the windows are white, corner boards are white, and perhaps a coin, my predecessor's drawing shows something like a little treatment, like a coin flank in either upper part. I don't know that it's necessary for what he's trying to achieve. But I regret, I didn't come better prepared. I just got the job a week ago, and I just worked at this before I came, you know, I did it this afternoon. But we're here for the review and answer any questions you have.
Okay. Just, uh, one question I have is, is he gonna be doing this work on all four sides of the building?
Only the front and halfway down both sides, or about one-third of the way down, the left and the right.
Okay, being that he's not doing the, the two sides fully, um, is that visible from Route 9?
Well, there's already a return on the existing canopy. He was trying to stay within that footprint. I don't think he'd have a problem going down...
But he's gonna make it, in other, in other words, I'm looking at is, he's gonna blend this in somehow color-wise, so that when you're driving up Route 9, if you're, you know, you're not just gonna stop at that point and then...
No, absolutely not. Be monolithic.
Okay, normally, we would, yeah, we would require, you know, elevations for all four sides of the building. That's right.
Well, I can, you know, certainly provide more drawings and more accurate drawings with that. But the main color is, again, this charcoal-type gray, and then in the front, the pearl white, stucco with a little texture, and it's about all it needs. It's not a very large building, but we don't wanna overdo it.
Lighting plan with light levels on all this new lighting I see here? I mean, and, you know, it's not that detailed, you're not gonna tell what it's gonna be, but if they're replacing all the lighting here, I know the lighting on that old building is really a factor, because it was all underneath the awning and then a couple of big ones on the roof.
He's showing pendants coming off of...
Yeah, just we need something with the lighting on it.
The sconces sort of here. We'll need to submit lighting.
Yeah. What are we looking for, like five on those? Outside the building like that for security lighting?
I would say lower than...
Lower than that?
Like two or three.
Yeah, at its, at its peak, at its hot spots, and fading out to one and point five from property one.
Yeah, it's just something that we've been trying to get under control.
Right, I imagine there's initially a blinding of the Route 9 southbound. You can't make, you know, it has to shine down certain DB.
Yeah.
There are accent lights anyways, right, on the building?
That's all they are. If I'm not mistaken, there are parking lot lights.
Because they don't, I mean, they don't, they don't need to be bright, just accent.
Right, right, you're just gonna go down to some...
Yeah, what about signage?
I don't know what si, on the drawings that were filed, it indicates the spaces, there's going to be signage. There is a communicate, or I think it's a medical building store on the front, lower left-hand. I'm not sure who everybody else is. I shouldn't, again, sorry if I'm unprepared, but they'll have their own signs, and they'll have to fit within your sign code. I imagine there's a maximum size. Or a separate application, I should say.
I mean, wanna, wanna see where the, do we wanna see where the signs are gonna be?
Yeah, because there's no...
At least, at least the area, you know, the areas that are being proposed for signage.
It's on the, it's on the drawing that was submitted before mine.
The one before yours, it only shows three.
I see where it says...
Yeah, it shows three locations, right. So it's only gonna remain those three locations?
Well, I, I, it's not a high-profile, I mean, it's a point of destination for most people. They'll have a sign in their window or their door, but I don't know.
Yeah, I can't remember. Does it have a monument sign out in front that has the tenants on it?
I just passed it. There was at one time. I'm not sure now if there's still.
I don't think there is, because Arts next door has one, but I don't think this is...
Yeah, yeah, I can't remember who has a...
Yeah, because there's like six entryway doors on the front of this, and only three spots per sign.
Yeah. Well, because we're probably giving you an approval just for the three areas that you have shown on here.
Well, he'd like to start the demolition, see what he's, you know, what he's gonna encounter with the building. We're putting everything back with metal studs. Today, I'm having insect problems everywhere. I don't know if he anticipates that, but he want, he wants to strip the building down. And I can imagine you wouldn't wanna approve that without first having the architectural drawing, but he asked me to see if I could possibly propose that, that he would get a demolition permit.
You can't get a demolition permit until you're on the planning board.
Right.
Makes sense.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we just don't wanna go ahead and give, yeah, I mean, I mean, we could approve what you have here, but then it'll just bring them back again for other changes.
I anticipated that. He actually couldn't make it, because he's stuck in Florida. I could think of other places to be stuck, but he's, I imagine I'd have to come back.
So back to the, just back to the lighting real quick, let's just touch base on that. So do we, do we feel if it's accent lighting, do we feel we need a photometric, or do we need to just get them to submit cut sheets for the lighting products that they're gonna use? And then go off of that?
It's hard to tell what...
We wanna have a limit there, right?
Yeah, that's my concern, is that, you know, accent lights frequently are supposed as accent lights, and then when they end up on the building, it's, it's way too bright.
Yeah, they're pumping out six feet.
Couple that with what already exists in the parking lot, who knows?
Okay.
So just a suggestion, he asked to come back for the signage, and the, and maybe come back for the lighting, since they're accent lights, they're not imperative to be put on immediately.
Right.
Come back for the lighting with a plan and the cut sheets and the signage.
I'll do the light throw also. I've done that. I have a couple of DB, light, not DBs, but light meters, candlepower meters, and I could, I've actually had my client set one up as a mock-up and then walk back in the dark to see where it throws, until it doesn't read on the meter. You can see the moon, but it doesn't read on the meter.
Yeah, I mean, that might be...
Do it separate, do the, if you want to approve the building tonight, but no lighting, no signage.
We approve this and then have him come back for a lighting and lighting and signage?
Yeah, I think a more, a better rendering. A better rendering showing signage and lighting.
Absolutely.
Okay, but there are the basics, for the basics of what's being submitted right now?
Yeah, I have no issue with that.
So in other words, approve this for pending lighting.
If you like it, and you're inclined to...
Well, I don't think it's gonna be an issue on the sides, you know, for the, for the other. But I mean, in the future submission, they can submit all four sides.
Well, in the meantime, he can order the roofing, the windows, he can order the stucco.
He could start, go ahead, mobilizing, right, the ordering of materials.
Yes.
Okay.
It takes a long time today. Everything seems to be a little delayed.
So the signage and the lighting, that's what you have to work on.
Okay, I'll make certain that I have that complete for the next time.
Okay, true. Yeah, so I mean, we can go ahead and do that, and we'll resubmit with everything, and we'll give them a final approval at that point. But in terms of the concept of what they have, I think the board's, board seems to be happy with it.
Thank you.
So you're gonna approve this architectural for the look and color?
We could, we could do that if we need to. We can vote on that now. I mean, we could vote on this.
But be clear, no signage and no lighting until you come back, and he needs building permits before he starts working.
So we need a, a motion to approve...
I'll make the motion.
The architectural as shown, without approval for lighting and signage.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Motion's been made, seconded by Ralph, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right, you're welcome. Okay. Okay, our next item on the agenda this evening is a conceptual review for Jiffy Lube Multi-Care.
Good evening. My name's Brady Curlici, representing Seven Multi-Site Solutions, the engineering firm for this project. We are here tonight to propose redevelopment of an existing 78-acre shopping center pad. This will be part of a lease agreement with the Wappinger Shopping Center LLC. Our proposed redevelopment would be the demolition of the existing fast food restaurant, parking, landscaping, and utilities, and the construction of the new 3,057-square-foot Jiffy Lube Multi-Care facility. With that, we would include all associated utilities, drive aisles, parking, signage landscaping, as well as a dumpster enclosure. Right now, the site is currently zoned as a SC zoning district. The proposed commercial retail automotive service center and oil change facilities are shown as being allowed with a special permit. To speak to some of our services, typical Jiffy Lube services would include oil changes, vehicle inspections, cabin air filter replacements, replacement of fluids, batteries, minor brake work, exterior glass, suspension work, maintenance and repair, all constituting minor automotive repair services. Our typical service times are between 30 and 120 minutes. Currently, there are eight to 10 parking stalls provided for employees and vehicle stack, and there would be no storage of vehicles or equipment overnight. The site is currently within a FEMA flood zone designation X. There are no existing wetlands. The site generally slopes to the northwest, slopes from northwest to southeast, and drains to the existing storm sewer network and stormwater maintenance facilities. These are all within the tributary of the Wappinger Creek and Hudson River. The existing site consists of 79% impervious surfaces, and the existing soil there is listed as urban land. Our proposed development will utilize existing stormwater drainage facilities, including water treatment and other soil erosion and sedimentation controls. The proposed redevelopment will add more pervious area to the overall site in general. The proposed site, we would be aiming for 65% impervious area. We will also keep within the existing stormwater maintenance agreement for the site, which will be utilized and followed. There are no proposed improvements to the existing storm sewer network. Sanitary and existing water main are also to remain the same. The proposed modifications to the existing connections would be all that we would be looking for for utilities. Currently, this site does not share parking with the surrounding shopping center anchors. We would intend to keep that separation of parking. Existing volumes of traffic on the roads adjacent to the shopping center would also not be significantly impacted as our peak trips would be different than that of the current Sonic fast food restaurant. It is anticipated that our redevelopment will generate less traffic than the previous usage. The proposed redevelopment will slightly increase the overall parking count. So we'd like to request the conceptual review, with the understanding that we will be needing variances for the front yard setback that is provided in site plan, as well as automotive and special use for the automotive service station at that location.
All right, so, I mean, obviously, it's conceptual review only tonight. I mean, we're just, I guess, obviously, you're here to, to get some, some questions answered, I guess. It seems like the intent is obviously to install the building as proposed on a plan with the garage doors facing the road, you know? Let me open it up to some of the board members.
The height of the new building, is it taller than the existing?
Typically, we propose 35, I believe, or close to that point. That would be at the point where we have our, where we have the parapet, flat roof. I'm unsure what the existing height is, but we...
So 35 is gonna be the proposed?
That would be the maximum, I believe, yes.
No height variances required, Steph?
No, 35 is our height.
35, okay. Also, the existing, for the existing used oil and for the new building with the new usage, where, where does that oil fall into? Is there any underground pipings that are susceptible underground?
So with the Jiffy Lube Multi-Care, they do a two-step containment system. So drained oil is drained into barrels.
Polyethylene barrels or something else?
I would have to...
No, they're metal.
Type of, yeah.
They're metal, they use a 280-gallon tank double-up, right?
Yes.
And how often are they removed by your contractor?
So those would be pumped out, I believe, every other week. That's something I'd have to check with.
So there's no open systems or where the technicians work? There's no open piping or anything where even minuscule amounts could escape to?
Correct, and then the basement itself is designed to be a secondary containment, so that is completely sealed, so there would be no ability for any oils or automotive fluids to permeate into that surface.
Okay, also, I like your lowercase lettering on the new conceptual design. I like it a lot. Is that, is that standard for all Jiffy Lubes now, or is this specific just to this, to this building? Is it like a franchise?
So it is, typically, we try to come in with a similar package for every building, and then, of course, with that, we see what, you know, comments or requirements there are with the local municipalities and...
It's got a nice look.
I had like two questions. This is a multi-care, so you do tires and stuff, right?
Correct.
I don't see a scrap tire enclosure. The only other option they use is usually a tractor-trailer parked there to put the scrap tires in. I don't see a spot for that. And scrap metal too, because they're doing, you know, you'll need somewhere to store scrap metal that's enclosed if you're doing brakes and stuff.
Okay.
Right? It's not on here, so it'd be something...
So I can, yep, I can verify what the specific intended uses for this facility would be, and we can address how any scrap metals or materials from automotive services are dealt with.
And tires also, because that's a whole separate deal, scrap tires.
Now, you said the garage doors face Route 9?
Correct.
Typically, I thought we did not...
No, we don't. To go to zoning here?
He's gonna, he's gonna apply for variance for that. That's what you mentioned earlier. That's, that's up to the zoning board to make that decision. But we wouldn't be able to do anything with the application for approval unless they get that.
Right.
Yeah.
That would come first, right? That would come first, this landscaping?
Yeah, well, depending on how they submit it. If they submit it to us, and then they go to the ZBA at the same time, and we do a coordinated reveal.
Did you attempt or are you attempting it differently, or?
I'm sorry.
Did you try spinning the building so the doors do not face Route 9?
At this time, we have not.
Are they drive-through, is this like a drive-through from one side to the other?
Correct, they would stack on one side if needed. They pull in directly, get the service is complete, they then pull out and use the.
Given that, given Pete just said maybe you look more than half, I think that means you just reposition the building, let's drive in now. Depending upon if the dimensions, you know, pull forward.
Yeah, that's something we can.
We're marrying it all together.
That's something we could, that's something we could look at after.
Your stacking plan, I'm assuming the side with two cars is where they're stacking, and the side with one is where they're pulling out.
Correct.
It looks like your stacking plan is conflicting with your turning template?
Yeah.
You should take a look at that.
Okay. And is that for the truck turn radius, or is it specific to just?
It looks like it's pulling up to the garbage enclosure, so it looks like a trash. But it would probably also conflict with the turning radius of a fire truck, which would obviously be more problematic. My other question Barbara and I were just discussing, you should take a look at the section of the zoning code pertaining to signage. We've got requirements in there in terms of the number of and the size of permitted signs, and just looking at your elevations, it looks like you were proposing one would be permitted, that might be another variance that you would need to request, or you could modify your signage plan.
So typically, we only allow, you're not on a corner, you're inside a shopping center, so it's just the front, and you're proposing it, it looks like on every side.
Okay.
Also, the monument sign, you're not entitled to a separate monument sign? The shopping center already has a monument sign.
The circles on the median between Route 9 and the proposed building, are those existing or are those proposed landscaping?
That, that would be.
All the circles that are along the property line and.
I'm assuming it's a head row, it could be something else, but.
Yeah, I believe that that would just, that's just landscaping that's on there, because we haven't formally completed a landscaping plan yet. But the intent would be to essentially stop any work where the existing paving ends, and then the existing shopping center landscaping, buttoning up to the highway would remain.
Okay, I was just curious about the heights of that and how that would interact with the visibility of those doors that might, you know, affect your request for variance.
Is the service bay area, do you know if that's air-conditioned space?
The service bay area?
Yeah.
It, I would have to verify if it is. I know that we have standardized heating in there for winter.
Yeah. This is why I ask, is obviously in, you know, the summertime, if it's, if it's not air-conditioned space, there's probably a good chance that, you know, the doors are going to be open on a nice day.
Yeah.
So, I mean, again, that's all, I think that's all part of the, you know, the ZBA, considering the variance.
They would have to, yeah, they would have to make a condition. I mean, I don't know, I mean, I'm.
And submit a lighting plan with this too? I'm sure you're going to change the lighting in the lot around the building, right?
Correct, yeah, our intent was to solicit some initial comments.
Yeah, that with lighting levels and stuff.
Yeah, you'd have to submit a full lighting plan for what you're proposing to do.
Correct.
You probably won't need one for the entire site for the shopping center, but we would be curious how the proposed lighting in your area would interact or stack with the existing lighting that would not change in the surrounding parking area that would be part of the shopping center?
Yeah, we can provide a photo map.
Yeah, that'd be great. And if there is a, you know, a site plan for the shopping center, you can get that lighting level, the existing lighting levels.
Do you plan to do any borings for the building, for the foundation design and all that?
Yes, we'll do a geotechnical kind of soil.
Because what I was thinking about is, I don't want to call it, you know, the basement area, but the area where, you know, the mechanics are working to change, you know, the oil, that's going to be, that's going to be below grade.
Correct.
And I would be curious if they encounter groundwater, and if you had to put in some kind of a pumping system.
Okay, yeah, we can, if we haven't already, we should have a geotechnical test done.
Can you submit that with the application, when you make a formal application?
Absolutely.
Hey Barbara, do you, when was, or planning board, when was the Sonic approved? Do you have any idea?
Ten years ago?
Ten years ago?
We can pull the plan out for that.
Because what I was thinking about is if you're going to disturb more than an acre of area, you're going to have to do a storm water pollution prevention plan.
Okay, yeah, we intend to only disturb .78, but we can actually be triggered by that. So just under an acre.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
Not really, no.
No? Okay, alright, so, I guess at this point, I'd be looking for, you know, full submission for what you're going to propose. Obviously, as much detail as possible for the project. And then we can, you know, once you submit that, we put on the next available agenda, and then we can move forward from there.
And would it be recommended that we would pursue any variances we need prior to that, or?
No. We'll do, we'll do a coordinator review.
Do a coordinator review would probably be the best bet. Submit, submit it to the planning board, and we'll refer you to the zoning board.
And then, is there anybody specifically, if we have any other questions or minor items that we could reach out to?
Once you make application to the, to the board, you know, the project will be reviewed by, you know, the staff, because at that point, you'll have to establish escrow accounts. They'll review it. Once you get those review letters, you know, we'll discuss those at the, at the meeting, and then we'll move forward from there. Okay?
Yes.
So, do you have any other questions, or?
That's all, thank you very much.
Okay, so we'll look forward to your submission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay, our next item on the agenda this evening is a conceptual review for Deer Ridge Apartments.
Good evening. I usually don't use a mic, but I'll use it tonight since it's here. My name's Craig O'Donnell, I live at 640 Wheeler Hill Road, right here in Houstonville. My name's Craig O'Donnell, I live at 640 Wheeler Hill Road, right here in Houstonville. I'm here with Derek Day from Dane Stokosa, the engineer for the project. I'm here also with my son-in-law, who's working with me on this project. I'm here tonight to make a presentation before the board, just to bring him up to speed with what I'm proposing. I don't know if you're aware of the Gilbert Park property, it's on Old Hopewell Road, on the corner of Pine Ridge and Old Hopewell, across from Scott Drive. It has about 500 feet of road frontage. It's a wooded parcel, as you're going towards All Angels Hill Road. Pine Ridge is on your right, just past it. Before you get to Truffle Ridge, it's on the right-hand side. It's all that wooded parcel, it's 35 acres, goes all the way up the hill. I've been speaking with the town about a need for rental housing, something that's affordable, something that people want to, that can't afford a house or don't want a house. And this parcel came to mind, we've had several people looking at it, and it sort of ticks all the boxes. It borders the Water and Sewer District, there's 2,900 feet behind Truffle Ridge that the property borders, and that is the line of the Water and Sewer District. So I've spoken to the town about including it into the Water and Sewer District, and seems to make sense. I'm also looking to rezone the property from RMF, or from R40 to RMF5. All the other properties in the town are, any RMF5 property is surrounded by residential property, just like, just like this wood. Currently, the housing market is basically inundated, or there's nothing available, and I'm finding more and more people are actually looking to rent apartments. People my age are selling their house, moving into apartments locally. Also, young people are moving into apartments, either working, working at home or, or locally. And it's people that either don't want a house or can't afford a house. I've applied to the Tri-Muni Sewer Commission for inclusion of, or acceptance of the wastewater that would be potentially generated from this project, and I received a, an approval letter from them for the wastewater. I've spoken to the town and to, for water at the property, and I received approval for that, or conceptual approval for that. I've actually applied for the inclusion into the Water and Sewer District. I hope to hear something on that, maybe the end of this month. Last year, I built a property very similar to what I'm proposing, up on the end of Sheaf Road, Deer Creek Apartments. I know Bruce is familiar with it. Twenty-four units, two-bedroom, two-bath. They were rented within five weeks, and there's now a waiting list of probably twice that amount for that property. That is what I'm trying to, that's what I'm proposing to do on this property, is the same, same exact thing. I have some photos, can I pass them around, Bruce?
Yeah, you could pass them around, if you have a couple.
You want to look at? These are photos of the, of the complex that I built last year.
They're looking at town water and sewer to hook up to for all this?
Yeah, we need that, we need both for that property.
I worked with the town of Poughkeepsie on that project. That was not in a multifamily zone, however, the town was enthusiastic about getting rental properties there. I applied for rezones, granted that. However, that was in this Water and Sewer District there, and what I ended up having to do was drill there, put a force main from the south side of Casper Kill Creek, under and over and around Casper Kill Creek, all the way up to the new high at 1,900 feet. I created a pump station there, which, which receives the wastewater from the Deer Creek Apartments, but also is going to service the surrounding area. I worked with CPL on that project too, and I think I can attest that there was no, no issues on that process. Back in 1989 and 90, I built Spring Terrace, it's on All Angels Hill Road, just before you get to 376, going towards the airport, on the left-hand side. I envisioned this property being similar to that, because the proposed entrance off of Old Hopewell Road, you're only going to see one building. As that, as that winds up the hill, it's going to remain all wooded, except for the disturbed areas of where the buildings are, and even in the wintertime, there are a couple houses on Pine Ridge that might see one or two buildings. There's two lots on Truffle Ridge that will see one or two buildings in the wintertime, and other than that, there's not a lot of visibility. Up on Winfield, there's a couple houses there, they'll see one building. So it's not a, it's not going to be a scorched earth, where you just go and cut all the trees down and have this major, major disturbance.
That's, that's what you're representing with those areas of green?
Yeah, the green is all going to be wooded.
Okay.
And it's actually going to be even more woods in a lot of the other areas, and the woods actually extend all the way to the back of the other houses. Even the big circle in the center is going to be wooded, so, you know, there's going to be minimal disturbance to the property. I'm not planning on going in and just, like some of the other projects I've seen in the area, just go and just cut all the trees down, so that's not in the plan. But if you go over to Spring Terrace and just drive in there, you'll get an idea of what I'm trying to propose, which is, you know, buildings carved into the woods, where you can maybe only see one, two, or three buildings at a time. This is 2,900 feet, over, well over a half a mile from the entrance to the back building. So, and it's going to just meander through the, through the wooded parcel, similar to the Spring Terrace project. Property doesn't require any subdivision, no variances. There's no town services that are going to be needed for this project. It's all private property, private road, be maintained by the owner of the project, which would be me and my wife and my family. And I have water, I got sewer. I think it's a good project for this area, the traffic on the newly improved Old Hopewell Road can more than handle it. That's okay. Uh, the existing neighborhood probably won't be impacted, because the entry is coming out onto Old Hopewell Road, and there will be.
Let's just address the board. Yeah, you can. Correct, let's address the board. We're not having, there's no public comment this evening, we're, they're just here to present, present it to the board.
Yeah, I know.
Right, to move forward.
I can, you know, I'm always, I'm going to address everybody's concern.
No, 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 and like I said, again, I know you have, you have a few things before you can come back and submit to us anyway, I mean, they're.
Yeah, I'm just here to make you guys aware of what I'm doing.
Zoning change and water and sewer.
Exactly.
Right.
Yep.
Which, you know, this is just to kind of give us an idea of what's going on before, you know.
Future.
Right, before anything, you know, comes to us as a full submission.
Yep, correct, Bruce, thank you. You know, in this part of town, I think a project like this would be beneficial. I think visually appealing, because you won't be able to even see the properties, or the buildings. The tax base is going to be increased by hundreds of thousands of dollars, and receive basically no services. Schoolchildren is always a concern for new projects. However, these, this type of property is going to generate very, very few school-aged children. The project that I just completed in, in Poughkeepsie has no school-aged children. There, matter of fact, I think there's only three kids that live there, and they're all infants.
Why?
Because it's, you know who lives there is people like me that sold their house, and want to live in an apartment, don't want to mow the lawn, don't want to pay the taxes, don't want to do the maintenance. Kids are gone. I have young people in there, also newly married, both of them working, no children.
How many?
A lot of singles.
Altogether?
I'm sorry?
How many units were in a year altogether?
One sixty-four.
One sixty-four.
Sixty-four.
Yep.
All two-bedroom.
Yep.
So how, what's your layout? It's how many, how many, how many stacked, how high?
Two-story.
It looks like two-story.
No three-story. Two-story only, same as a house. They're just basically 13 big houses. You know?
That's crazy.
Okay. Electric power's already there. Marcy South is already there.
What's the price point? What's the rental price point?
I don't know. The Deer Creek are 2,100.
For two-bedroom?
Two-bedroom, two-bath, 1,100 square feet.
How many square feet is these?
Same. I'm proposing to do the same exact buildings. That's why I gave you the...
Two-bath for each unit?
Yeah, that's why I gave you the photos.
Twenty-one hundred bucks a month?
Yep.
For this area?
Yep.
Now, you say it won't affect traffic?
Well, I mean, you know.
Do you have something backed it up?
Yeah.
Do you have a traffic study or something?
Yes, yes. We already looked at the traffic on Old Hopewell Road, and it doesn't come close to the maximum allowable.
When was the study done?
I'm sorry? No, it's in public, it's Dutchess County Public Records.
Yeah, when was the traffic study done?
I haven't done the traffic study. It's the, it's the information that's out there.
So with, yeah, so with the cemental, I mean, obviously, there would have to be a traffic.
Yeah.
Some type of traffic study submitted with the project.
Obviously.
Right.
Craig, have you had any, had any conversations with other county in terms of the access and potential, potential traffic impacts?
No.
What if there's a fire, and you want to run away in?
Well, there's actually three accesses to the property.
All right, please.
It's all on the plan.
All right.
However, the main entrance would be on Old Hopewell Road, and also, there's another entrance on Pine Ridge, but only a couple hundred yards into Pine Ridge from Old Hopewell. It'll only be going by one home, I believe. Winfield Terrace, I don't... There was a question about fire access, and Winfield Terrace would probably be used for that.
You anticipate making these apartments high-end, granite countertops, stainless steel appliances?
Corian countertops, yep.
Hardwood floor.
Or quartz countertops.
Which is pretty, pretty good.
LVT tile.
That's medium grade.
You can see on the photos there, it's LVT tile.
That's for the other place, so I want to know what you're doing here.
Same thing. I'm proposing the same plan.
You're going to demand at least 2,100 bucks a month?
Yeah. But I also, I've also spoken to the town about providing some affordable housing there, so there will be some units that'll be even less than that.
And the reason behind it?
Is because there's an affordable housing need in Dutchess County. The county determines what affordable housing is.
Yeah. It's the Affordable Housing Act. But are you mandated to do that?
I'm not mandated to do it, but I've offered to do it.
Are you going to do that?
That was one of the things that we talked about.
How many of the units would you do that for?
Probably 10%.
Well, this is good information that they need to know.
Yeah, I know.
Couple other things, Craig.
Yep.
Like Derek, have you guys done any preliminary road-like profiles, to see what, you know, your grading's going to be like, or...
Yes, we have.
And conceptual, like drainage?
It's buildable.
It's what?
Buildable.
Okay, because, you know, it's steep there, obviously.
But these aren't going to be town roads, Pete.
No, no, I know that.
Yep. These are all going to be basically glorified driveways, you know?
So out of 164 apartments, approximately 16 to 17 of those apartments, you would delegate to affordable housing?
Correct.
Out of the kindness of your heart?
No, it's something that we talked about right from the get-go, and I offered to do it.
And what price point is that?
I don't know. I don't know what's affordable housing. Dutchess County housing determines what affordable housing is, just like medium price of a...
What's your incentive for doing that?
What's my incentive?
Why not just get the 2,100 for 164 apartments?
I could, I could, I guess.
2,100 plus?
Yep.
Quartz countertops, hardwood flooring, stainless steel appliances?
That's right.
Sounds like 2,500, 2,600.
Hmm, no, we're, we're getting the 2,100 at Deer Creek. We have good tenants there. My wife and I manage the property. We have good tenants, no troublemakers, low maintenance, there's no porches on the back, no sliding doors, no barbecues, no storage crap. I used to own the Dutchess Falls Apartments, right across from Double-O Grill.
Yeah.
I went in there, and basically, there was 80 apartments there. I kicked 25 to 30 people out soon as I got there. I had, I had drug dealers, gangs. I had crime going crazy in there. I ended up evicting 28 people in the first six months I was there. Then I completely rehabbed every single unit in there. Windows, doors, kitchen, siding. There was not once a piece of insulation in those buildings, blue insulation in every single one of them. New heating systems, everything. So, you know, I'm, I'm used to dealing with that, that tendency, and I just really would rather not. The ones that I have here at Deer Creek, all good people, no troublemakers, you know, so, yes, I could probably get more money for them, but I feel as though, as if it's full, then, and there's no problems, I'm happy.
I just think the more information that I ask you, and our board members ask you, the more information, whether insignificant or not at this time, I think is applicable, because who knows when it's going to become important later on? Because you have a whole room full of people here that want to know details.
How much?
Sixteen, thirteen seventy a month, but an affordable housing unit would take...
Is that, what's that from Dutchess County?
Yeah.
Okay. Whatever, whatever that determined at the time.
You're incentivized to rent for approx, money out of your pocket, for approximately 10% of those units.
Correct.
You're willing to take 66% less money per month.
I don't know what the percentage is.
I don't know what the incentive is behind that.
Well, when I first came to the town, they asked me if I would provide some affordable housing, and I agreed to it.
The town service, fire department, is the department that has to handle it?
No, why would they be if, if the taxes are coming in, and they're not providing any service? Of course, if there was a fire there, the fire department would be there, and if there was crime there, the police would be there.
Okay, all right, hold on. Let's, it's not, okay, this is not a public hearing, and we're not accepting public comment right now. Let the board have the discussion with the applicant. There will be a point in time, if they come back with this, with a full application, we will have public hearings on this application, and everybody will be able to discuss whatever they wish to discuss, or at least raise all the questions that they have. Okay? Thank you.
Sir, excuse me. If we're done with the board, can you take it down? Please, see or hear you, I apologize.
Yeah, we can take the board.
I appreciate it.
It's fine.
But thank, I don't want to stand behind a gentleman. Thank you.
As populations increase in the town of Wapping, you say 25,000 residents plus, 25,000, 27,000. It seems like it's been like that for seven to 10 years.
Yep.
Okay, slightly in the increase. Just answer the question to somebody in the audience. If you have more residents, living in an area, 3, 4, 500 people, whatever that is, how many people per apartment, yeah, resources are going to increase, fire department, police department, that's just, that's just human life, you know, it's just what it is.
You're also, you're also taking the taxes into...
Right.
You know, I would think be a positive, but... Any other questions? Concerns?
A lot of wildlife.
Lot of wildlife there. And they're, and they're...
Allison's not a public hearing.
Okay. All right. So any board members have any other questions? No staff have any questions? No. Okay, so I mean, obviously, at this point, I mean, I mean, it's really, I know you have a lot of other late work to take care of before you can even submit to us.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
But no, the reason I'm on here is just to make you guys aware of what I'm doing.
No, no, we appreciate that. That's, you know, just so that we know what's going on, and we know that, you know, potentially what, you know, what may be coming, you know, our way at some point. Again, this is, I know this is something that you have to get other, other factors taken care of before...
Oh, yeah.
We could even, you know, we could even discuss it.
Yeah, so I'm going to, I'll just keep moving forward, and I'll address the public's concerns, as best as possible.
When we get to the application process, then we'll move forward from there.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Just because they're doing it on their personal camera. You have like a, it's like a, it's a video camera, you don't want to... Yeah, unfortunately, unfortunately, yeah, we've been down this road before, because it's a public meeting.
Yeah, I could do that, and I guess I miss ya. Yeah, I think so. I'm getting all worried right now.
Okay. Please. Thank you. All right, we, our next item on the agenda this evening is Cedar Hill Heights subdivision. Again, this is a conceptual review. The applicant is only presenting to the board, just to make the board aware of what they're proposing. This project needs other items, such as the previous project, before it could even come back to the planning board for a full submission, for a review. Okay? We're not taking any public comment at this time. We're just here to have a discussion between the applicant, the board, and the board's professionals.
Good evening. Amy Bomberdery with Day and Stokosa Engineering. We have three different layouts, which all require a zoning change to the RM3 zoning district. And it also may require an extension of the sewer line to accommodate the flows from this project. One of the first layouts is 138 single-family homes. The parcels would be about 10,000 square feet in a cluster subdivision, so that there's a fair amount of open space on all sides of the parcel. The second is 324 apartments. It's 27 buildings with 12 units in each. And the third is a mixture of townhomes. So there'd be two, three, and four units attached, and then, single-family homes. So you'd have a total of 338 proposed dwelling units. 213 would be townhomes, and 125 would be single-family homes. So Dutchess County has done a, a study on the vacancy rate of the county for rentals and affordable housing, and the county is at .9%. The town of Wapping is at .5%, and a healthy vacancy rate is 5%. So we need to build these in order to accommodate people who need housing in this market.
Okay, right, so there is a need, obviously, for... With the proposal, all the roads that are being put in, are all these is going to be roads that are turned over to the town? Or is this going to be all private roads?
I think that'd be determined depending on if it's, if it's a single-family home, you know...
Right.
Whether they've set up a...
But if it's a single-family, it'll be a town road.
Right, if it's rentals...
And if it becomes, you know, something else, then it will be private.
Right.
Okay. Okay. All right, so, open it up to the rest of the board here. Anybody have some questions regarding what's being proposed to us? The sewer, you're hooking into the town?
Well, that's up in the air right now. We're not sure if we'd be able to hook into the gravity-fed line on Cedar Hill Road, or if we'd have to go out towards Merritt Boulevard. But we'll have to study that with, depending on how many units we'll have, that will determine how much flow we have and capacity issues.
And you'll be tying into town water at the end of Cedar Hill?
Correct.
Once again, I ask about the traffic. Do you have any kind of studies on that, or that's forthcoming?
We don't have any studies on that, because we're not sure which layout the board would prefer, so we don't know how many units we'll have. And there's different multipliers for different kinds of housing units, single-family home versus...
So, best-case scenario out of these plans is 138 single families, basically?
That's a matter of opinion. It's best case.
I don't think I'm the only one that's opinion. Are you looking for us to make that decision, or are you looking to make that decision on your own?
No, I'm just, we're, we're looking to see what the board prefers. So if the board does prefer that, then we'll come up with numbers based on that capacity.
Amy, can you just briefly describe the composition one more time? The, the number of units, and then how they're arranged for the townhomes, single-family homes, and the apartments?
Yes, so there's 138 single-family homes in one layout, and each of those units would be, or each of those parcels would be 10,000 square feet each.
Is that labeled as a cluster?
That would be a cluster subdivision, yes.
So that's 138?
Yep. The second is 324 apartments. That's 27 buildings with 12 units in each.
That's either or?
We have three options that we're pursuing that right now, so it's not, right, it's either or. And then the third is 213 townhomes and 125 single-family homes, for a total of 338 proposed dwelling units.
Is it 213? This is the townhome alternative, you said 213?
It's a combination of 213 townhomes and 125 single-family homes, for a total of 338.
Thirty-five. Okay, thank you. And the, the area that's identified in black, that's slope above 25%?
Correct. So with the calculation of removing the environmentally sensitive area, we have a potential dwelling unit capacity of 388, based on the total square foot, or the total area of the parcel.
Is there any other encumbered areas, wetlands, things like that to worry about? Or is it just deep slopes?
It's just deep slopes. And as you can see, it's nine acres of deep slopes on a 140-acre parcel, so...
And the rest of it that is in 25 is still quite steep, right? I mean, it's still...
It's a little deceiving, because the scale is so big on this, so it's not, there are ways to work it around, that the grading would not be as bad as you think it would be by looking at this.
The last applicant discussed affordable housing. What percentage do you think you're going to do here?
That's up in the air. I mean, again, depending on what layout we go with, if we go with the single-family homes, it's all market-driven, so if it's rentals, then there's a potential for a percentage of it being affordable, but the market rate housing is in high demand right now.
Amy, can you just describe the proposed rezon one more time?
It's, yes, it'd be rezoned to residential multifamily three, so that means three dwelling units per acre, after you subtract out the environment.
And that would be true for all three of these alternatives?
Correct, that's, that would be the zoning change that we'd need, yeah. Correct, that's, that would be the, the zoning change that we'd need, yeah.
And it's, what is it right now?
R40, I believe.
Can you describe the, the current condition of the site, I guess, the last one was, is mostly forested. Is this forested, is it sort of bare hill, is it?
It's wooded, I, I'm not, I haven't actually walked the whole thing yet, so.
Sure, I mean, it's a big, it's a big parcel.
Yeah, it's big.
But it's wooded, as far as you know?
Yes.
Okay.
So I mean, either, either way, I mean, if it was whatever, whatever, whichever plan you go with, you still need the rezone either way.
Yes.
So.
And it would be the same, the same rezone.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of the density of the development.
Right, correct, yes, so, I mean, if it was the single-family homes, it's still gonna be, you know, the still the same RMF3?
Correct.
Is it, yeah, okay.
I mean, like, uh, my fellow member said earlier, I mean, the water, the, uh, the single-family home's probably your best, your best bet, because the inability to bring in sewer and water, which is gonna cost a lot for you. If you could do that, then you have more options, if you can't, the single-family homes, and I could be wrong, or it might be the better option.
In any scenario, we have to bring in sewer and water.
Yeah, but.
You're talking about not doing like 10,000 square foot lots?
So you wouldn't be able to do that?
You wouldn't be able to do sewer, you're gonna need at least a.
It's ridiculous.
Actually, I think it's, we need one acre for, uh.
Absolutely ridiculous.
One acre, R40 for sewer, right, or for, um, sorry, for septic systems.
Amy, is there, there's been any discussions?
Anything less, it has to have one or the other. It has to have either water or sewer. Yeah, they wanna cluster it. Which means they're gonna load out the blocks generally, these big houses.
There hasn't, uh, obviously, you know, there's the rec fee that we have to pay, or dedicate land, if there's any that's suitable for parkland, but.
So the town board is usually not in favor of any more parkland?
Okay.
We have so much.
Okay.
More empty apartment.
It's the rec fees then, right?
Yeah.
I don't know which way the board is, is leaning, but when I look at these three, the first thing I notice is that, uh, the apartment buildings avoid most of the steep slopes in comparison to the others. There's less disturbance, but in particular, they're able to avoid, um, the areas of steep slopes with the apartments. That's the first thing I see when I look at these three.
So it'd be more, more land would be preserved using the apartments?
It'd be less disturbance, particularly of the, the steep-sloped areas, yeah. And that also leads to all, all kinds of other efficiencies in terms of, uh. Well, that's, I mean, the apartments is 324 units, the, the townhome, single-family home combination is 338, so the apartments isn't even the largest of the three, but it does have the least amount of disturbance. Are the, are the apartments supposed to be two-story, or?
Two-story, correct.
Okay.
Be two-story, okay.
And within that 35-foot height?
Yes, of course, yes.
Okay.
Other than needing the zoning change, we, I, I don't think we'd need a variance for anything.
Big enough?
Yeah.
That's something we have to talk about.
Would these be private roads or town roads?
That was asked, I don't, it would depend on, it would depend.
If it was the apartments?
I mean, if it's apartments, yes, it would be private road, definitely, but the mixture of the townhomes, you know, if the townhomes are.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know the answer to that, right?
Okay. So, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's, it's kinda tough right now to give a decision on one, one particular, because, I think everybody's got a lot of concerns, one direction or the other, I mean, no matter what.
A lot of concerns.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't support any of those.
Yeah.
I think the impact's just too much on it.
Absolutely, I'm 200 percent.
Bruce, if I could just add, I mean, I think, uh, with, uh, several of these large projects that are proposed on Old, Old Hope Well Road, I, I think that they have to be looked at, like, globally. You know, the county's gonna have, you know, a lot of questions and a lot of concerns, you know, on traffic. So, somehow, we need to, we need to talk about, like, a process to, like, coordinate a review, because we're talking about, you know, potential water and sewer extensions.
Yep.
You know, what the impacts are from that, how we handle the secret, I don't, I mean, I don't really know yet, I mean, how, how, how the town would handle, you know, the secret process during the rezoning consideration, but, you know, there's a lot of potential impacts, so, from both projects.
I agree.
And they need to be looked at, like, together.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, potential, there's a lot, there's a, yeah, I mean, there's potentially these and, and other projects in the area, um, that just haven't been addressed, I mean, even the, the, the water and sewer plan that was presented to the board earlier this year really doesn't address any of these items.
Right.
You know, for increased, um, you know, increased usage on the system, I don't think, I think the water's not the issue, it's the, it's the sewer that's the drastic issue at this point. But it's, uh, there's a lot, I mean, there's.
All these, all the, all, all these issues have to be, like, addressed.
Right.
Together, over.
Every resident on the top of Cedar Hill was trying to drive $30,000 apiece about 15 years ago when we had this meeting, so he could put a pumping station at the bottom of Cedar Hill, you'd have to do the same thing with this project, and we still have nothing on the top of the hill.
That would have to be, that, again, that would have to be addressed.
I think you gotta look at both these applications together, just in the last one.
This is a pretty tough sell for me.
You know, you're talking about 500 units within half a mile of each other at the same time, that's a huge impact on that.
We can't handle all that. I mean, there's gonna have to be, there's gonna have to be a joint meeting, some.
Traffic can't handle it.
Somehow with, you know, the town and the county, because they need to be brought up, up, up to speed sooner rather than, you know, like, later.
Right.
They're gonna have, they're gonna have, like, a huge, like, say-in, you know, the road can han, you know, can handle it, or.
So, basically, at this point, it, I mean, it sounds like with your recommendation, maybe we need to, um, maybe we need to talk to the town board, um, that the planning board's gonna need to talk to the town board, and maybe with all the applicants involved, we may have to go ahead and establish some type of, um, you know, some type of review for these three before we can even make any decisions to move forward.
Yeah, yeah, it's a.
It's gotta be a.
Because it's gotta be a, yeah, because I, I mean, I understand that the infrastructure issues, um, I, I've been, you know, for the last few years, we've, we've discussed a lot of them. But, maybe that's what we'll need to do to move forward.
And we haven't really, I mean, we haven't even talked about, like, drainage yet, which.
Yeah.
Is gonna be, like, a big issue on, you know, again, like, both of these, but if they're gonna be, like, private, you know, they're all gonna be privately maintained, but still, you know, it's a concern.
Yeah.
It's a lot of, like, impervious area, and, you know, the slopes here, like, are tough on both, both projects, so.
I know it's real rocky in there, too.
A lot of things, a lot of things.
Yeah, super rocky, steep, so, yeah, go ahead, Paul, who's your comment?
So just, I think that the appropriate, um, review would be at the town board level, uh, with multiple requests for zoning changes, uh, that would substantiate large developments. I think there needs to be a review of the comprehensive plan to see if, uh, you know, it was contemplated at the time the zoning, uh, the current zoning was adopted. There are these numerous requests, I can, you know, a, a draft generic environmental impact statement, or, uh, you know, changes to the underlying comprehensive plan, you know, probably will need to be done to support the requested zoning changes, and at that point, I think, uh, you know, a more comprehensive review of these things, such as water, sewer, traffic, uh, can be reviewed, and it's probably most appropriately reviewed at that level. Uh, I don't know that this board can coordinate a environmental or a review of multiple projects, um, at the same time, because some projects may go, some projects may not go. Uh, so, you know, individual developers or property owners have the right to be heard before this board, uh, and not be beholden to some other developer that may or may not substantiate a project or actually build out the project. So, uh, if there are gonna be multiple changes requested through zoning, uh, it would have to be done, I believe, uh, with a review of the comprehensive plan, uh, and to see if that comprehensive plan supports those, and that comprehensive plan might need to be updated to include changes to infrastructure such as water, sewer, traffic.
Okay, um, so, I mean, it sounds like, I mean, the bigger, at this point, I mean, I think it's more, you know, within the town board's hands to, to do it, um, to make their changes. So, I mean, really, I don't think it were at any given point to give any direction one way or the other, do we?
Nope.
Alright, so nobody has any feelings towards any, any one option on any that was been submitted?
No.
No.
I think some research needs to be done.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Alright, so we'll have to, um, I said, I worked with the town board on getting, you know, to, to move forward, if you're, if you're planning to, to go ahead and get the change in the zoning, um, and then also work out the water and sewer issues.
Right, okay.
Uh, and then I guess at that point, then we could be at some type of, um, level where we can kind of evaluate it a little more. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so we're at the end of the agenda this evening, is there anything that we, uh, anything else we need to discuss this evening?
I'd like to make a move into adjournment.
Hold on, there is one item. Excuse me, we're, please, if you're done, if you can exit the room quietly, we're still trying to conduct a meeting. Thank you. Alright, so I know we did have some other open-ended items, uh, there was an email that, um, that I know I did receive regarding, um, the BJ's property, the BJ's gas station. I know that the applicant that was here in front of us, um, they've retained a biologist, um, who's done some review on the wetlands there, uh, they've asked if we would turn around and if we'd be willing to do a field trip out to that site to take a look at, you know, the wetlands that were in question. He's basically stating that they don't have any true significant value, he just wants to show us what's there, bring it to our attention, so that we can kind of get a feel for it after the discussion that we had with the applicant at the last meeting.
Definitely, definitely. I don't understand, so we went there and didn't look wet to him, and is that, I don't understand his request, he doesn't believe the map, or?
Yeah.
Basically?
I guess the map, yeah, he's stating that the map, you know, is contrary to what's actually there, um, is probably, they said what's there might be already have been filled in and passed.
It's a can of worms right there.
Why don't we go take a look? Go take a look.
Just go look.
Just go look. So, uh, is it something that you guys were willing to, you wanna go and set that up, and?
Sure.
Yeah.
We'd have to set that up, uh.
Is this BJ's?
Uh, this would be the BJ's, yeah, this would be the BJ's gas station, the, the, um, the conceptual, right, the conceptual plan that was submitted, I wanna say that email was sent out on, um.
Bruce, what I would recommend before the, uh, just for the board to, to know before they go out and meet with the applicant and their biologist, um, is that frequently what they mean when they say that a wetland does not have significance, is that that wetland is not going to have the size or the connectivity to support, um, significant biodiversity, so it's not gonna have, you know, newts, or, you know, frogs, or things like that. But I do know that historically, you were talking about flooding in that area.
Right.
And so, all the things that a wetland does to assist with flooding and, and water absorption, uh, is gonna be independent from what they're going to try to tell you about wetlands.
Oh, yeah.
I, I don't wanna set a precedent, every time somebody wants to build near a wetland, we gotta go out, he says it's not wet.
Sure.
Well, it's up to you guys, I mean, if you don't wanna do it, we don't have to do it, we don't have to go out there and entertain it at all, but.
Doesn't he have to convince his biologist?
They're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna submit.
I mean, I mean, if the map, if the biologist is saying this is a wetland.
We have wetland maps. Going to redeline what I think the biologist is going to try to sell.
Okay, oh, excuse me, we're, we're still having a meeting, we're still having a meeting here.
We'll have public hearing.
We're still conducting a public meeting, it's not open to, you know, we're, we're, we're discussing something right now, okay, thank you.
Come to the public hearing.
Sorry.
No, no, no.
Okay.
I was just talking.
So, back to this, so the, so the gas station issue with this wetland, I mean, we could, basically, at the end of the day, if we don't wanna go out there and look at it, we don't have to look at it, but, again, at some point in time, you know, if they come back with it, with a, with a, you know, with a study by them for whatever it is, you know, we might have to do it later on, so it doesn't matter one way or the other.
They weren't even close with the wetlands, though.
No, they were all.
The pumps are in the buffer.
Their discussion, he's trying to, he's trying to convince us that the wetland is not actually a wetland area, that's shown on that.
Can they? Can they actually come back with something that says that wetland's not viable anymore, or something, as a wetland?
Well, so there's, there's two things that might happen, one would be that they would ask the biologist to go out there and remap, reflag those wetlands. Um, and that's gonna be reflective of, uh, you know, presence of water, semi-permanent or not, vegetated species, things like that. What it sounds like they're trying to tell you is that it's not significant, and from my understanding, what that means is that it's not big enough and not connected to streams or other wetlands to support biodiversity in terms of amphibians, newts, things like that.
Yeah.
So that's what they're gonna try to tell you, that it's not significant, and that losing it, uh, does not represent an ecological impact. That being said, I haven't seen the emails, I, I don't know what they're trying to tell you, but in my experience, that's what they mean when they say the wetland is not significant, because if the wetland wasn't there, they would have a biologist go out and reflag it, and they'd come back and they'd say, there's no wetland there, it, it went away naturally. But that's not what they're saying, they're trying to convince you that the wetland is not significant, and therefore, it's not a big deal that they're in the buffer.
Why can't we just get it reflagged?
Because it probably is there, and they can't get it reflagged, no, no self-respecting biologist would go out there and reflag it into a different shape.
You're not looking for a different shape, I'm just assuming that the flags that were there are probably not.
Probably been, yeah, that's right.
How long ago was this done, when did they do this flagging, was this two years ago, was this just recently?
I thought.
Because I know the area floods.
I thought they had it flagged in the last year.
Back in, I'm gonna guess, around 2008, there was an approval for a huge progressive insurance building and associated parking, and I know there was a wetland in the back that they had to stay away from. The way the plan looked for BJ's doesn't have a lot of usable space up front, which would be in contrast to a big building with parking.
So what's wrong with getting it reflagged and ha, and then going and look at it, you know, those things change all the time.
Yeah, but if, if there's a new, if the wetland, if the plans that we just looked at have a wetland that come down the side of the property, which is the setback that they're infringing on, and that wasn't there when the progressive insurance, what, what, that suggests to me is that they did have it reflagged at some point in the last two years.
So, can they tell us when that was done?
All the time.
Yes, all twelve.
Not long ago, there was a message.
They, they changed in May of 2012, but keep in mind, there've been a lot of errors in those maps.
Right.
And there's been a lot of maps, a lot of parts of the FEMA map have been revised after surveyors and whatever's shown that they were in error, so.
He wants to come back with a study or something, I don't, I don't see it helping us going out there and him saying, you know, trying to convince us.
I'm just, I'm just bringing it to the board's attention, the email was sent out, I was copied on it, and they were looking to possibly set something up, if you don't wanna, if we don't wanna do it, we don't have to do it.
If he has a new study.
We don't have to, I just, I was just raising the option to say.
If he has a new study for us to look at.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Does he have one?
Just also, I would just caution, uh, from a, uh, open meetings perspective, uh, you know, the, the board meeting a consultant or a applicant at the property in order for them to try to convince you of something, uh, and, you know, to kind of juxtapose that, uh, to what was set here, which is a visual inspection by the board, just going out and doing your own independent inspection of a property. Um, I mean, those discussions and those, you know, trying. I mean, those discussions and those, you know, trying to convince should probably be done in an open public meeting, other than a site visit.
So, I mean, with that said, let's scrap the idea. Okay?
Anything else?
Other than that, I don't think I had anything else. I don't know. Is anything else that had to be brought up? No?
No.
Okay. So, with that...
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion made. Second in all favor?
Aye.
Okay.